We've called it over. How do you do with that cash position?
Well, we thank you again for the opportunity to gather together today. This community leads from this community. Or to dedicate themselves for the cause of helping others. I pray that you would guide and direct us forward to make decisions that benefit the neighbors and your friends. And God that you would help us forward to give out the business of the community in an efficient way. Thank you for all that you have allowed us to be a part of. I pray that you bless the remainder of this meeting, Jesus.
I pledge allegiance to the leaders. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The board will call everyone who seems to be present. Uh, their first financial report.
Continue your prayers.
All right, uh, I think, uh, approval for the bench, February ninth meeting. I saw they dropped that. I'm glad you said that, I'll fix that. All right, we adopt the millage at the April meeting.
Yes, sir. The state trying to make sure we follow the correct procedures. And I may have overs went too far with this, but it's just saying that at our next meeting, we will be adopting our millage again for the 2015 calendar year. And they just wanted an announcement at a regular meeting so that they'd have their more than thirty day and less than sixty day notice. That's what that's about.
All right. Presentation will go up there.
All right, let me bring, I brought several salesmen here. I just wanted to give them the three or four minutes of your time, just to let you know what they've got and their products. And then, um, we'll make a decision later.
Kevin, you want to go first, or you get your?
Uh, they did, but I'll go first.
You want us to wait out here?
No, we're ready for you. The boards wait for you to tell us about your fire trucks.
Which one?
Which one you want? Who starts first? Just, just, you can start.
It doesn't make any difference to me.
This is all, right now, we're working on state contract.
Okay, you want us to do this all with all of us in here?
I don't know. You want one at a time?
You go ahead, you can go ahead.
All right, one at a time. Sounds good to me, brother.
Good evening, gentlemen, ladies. Oh, I have a proposal here for a pumper twelve hundred and fifty gallons of water, twelve fifty, uh, pump. It's on an international chassis. It is built in Michigan. It is a demo truck from HME. It has a stainless steel pump module and stainless steel bed with the roll-up doors. Also provided a, a list of options that the chief talked to me about, um, in here. It is on GSA contract. Um, it's kind of a no frills, no thrills kind of truck, but it, it serves a purpose. It, it is a nice little truck. And it is available immediately for immediate delivery. Uh, it's sitting down in home. It was supposed to be here tonight, but our driver got sick and didn't tell anybody anything till this morning. So they kind of put a center upon it. So if anybody has any questions on it.
Pictures are of it?
Yes, I, I do have a proposal.
What size tanks you got on?
Twelve fifty.
Phone?
Uh, it does not have a phone system, but I did put a, a
Quote.
A, a cord in there to add a phone system to it.
It's an international?
It is an international.
And, um, what about length is it?
I don't recall.
Standard, standard length. Doesn't look short. In other words, it don't look like it's cut off at the end?
No, it's, it's a full-size pumper with all the compartmentation necessary for a class A pumper.
Roll-up doors?
Roll-up doors.
What kind of pump?
Uh, Waters.
You said twelve fifty?
Twelve fifty pump.
What we call it, the water line, you know, jump line?
Jump line, uh, there is a quote.
Roll-up, roll-up jump line.
There is a quote, uh, to add the extended bumper with the jump line in the front. That it does not have presently have one on it, but it can be added. That, that's not a, a big deal. All the fabrication and everything will be done and I'll shop in home.
What do you give a little?
And if that particular truck doesn't fit y'all needs, we, uh, do build, uh, trucks down in home that to fit the needs of the department.
To me, I think we need to save a pumper tankers. We've got a rural areas. What do you think of those?
Two fifty-seven.
I say that's a good price on it. That's right, one ninety-eight.
All right now.
That, that's for the base model.
And then he has this other sheet in here.
It's all the way in the back. The, the last page.
This was the options that we get closer to what, what we would need.
You, you take my base price and whatever options you want off that page, just add the two prices together, that's your total price.
Five hundred plus. One ninety-nine or one ninety-eight. One ninety-eight, eight ninety. All right. Anybody have a copy?
Is that going to be something we can keep with us to review?
Yes. And I apologize for only having one copy.
We can make copies. And then we'll have the board members to be able to review this stuff at their leisure between now and the next board meeting. And then if you do have some other information about pumper tanker combinations, go ahead and forward that to me.
Okay.
And I can.
That's really what we need. Down the rural areas.
And that's understandable. Um, I, I was still, I was looking for a pumper. So, but we, we can do the pumper tanker combinations, I mean fifteen hundred gallon tanks, two thousand gallon tanks.
Two thousand better. If I ordered it more than a hundred, better.
Okay. Yeah, and, and we do full tankers also. And all of our trucks, except for our ladder trucks, on the state contract.
And they're, are they completely made here in home?
They are com- if it's a custom-built truck on like an international or something, it is built in home of Louisiana.
What time of the company?
Five alone fire rights.
What, what used to be down there? Not, um, I don't know where it's at down there.
Near Eunice, there was, um, one down in Eunice.
I don't know where it's at. I've been somewhere in there.
Forever.
Yeah, you got forever in hold.
Very east of Baton Rouge.
Yeah.
Yeah. That's who I was thinking. All right, anybody got any questions for him?
If y'all like to see the truck, I mean, I can schedule, try to schedule another showing for y'all. Like I said, last, last minute driver.
Looking right now.
I have all this contact info.
Thank y'all for y'all time.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right.
Next, uh, next victim.
I don't know if you're much fun in my sense, whatever we get probably needs to have. Probably good. I'm pretty in the world, love you talking about that. You get out there, as you always said, you get out there with fifteen hundred gallons. You take a fifteen hundred gallon and that'll be, um, six, seven, like six, seven hundred gallons.
Okay. What do you, what do you guys want to know?
What do you got?
Well, the truck I brought today is a three thousand gallon Pierce FXP tanker.
Three thousand gallons?
That's a three thousand gallon. I, I guess, uh.
Everything you guys on state contract?
Everything, let me tell you, I'll tell you a little bit about Pierce. Uh, Pierce Fire Apparatus is one hundred and one years old this year. Uh, the oldest and largest fire apparatus manufacturer in the country. We build approximately two thousand fire trucks a year all over the United States and overseas. We work through a network of dealerships. I work for a company called Sidens Martin Emergency Group based out of Houston, Texas. We cover the state of Louisiana, Texas, and New Mexico for all of Pierce sales and service. Um, we're the largest dealer for Pierce apparatus and, uh, we've been in business about forty-five years ourselves as a dealer for them. We have a huge network of service is what we really like to sell alongside of our product. We know our product's great. I can tell you all, anything you want to know about our product, if you have questions, because every product is different. Every truck is different. Every piece on every truck is different depending on what you want is what I would be able to explain the best. But service, uh, we have two service centers in the state of Louisiana. We have twelve in the state of Texas and four in the state of New Mexico. Uh, we have fifty-five EBT specialists that are on the road at all times. They can come from any one of those service centers. If I need some, I can pull some from down south, some from over west of here. It kind of makes it nice to pull guys from everywhere to come out and service your truck at your fire station versus you having to take it somewhere to do that. Um, the truck I brought's a tanker. It's a product that we offer, uh, it's called an FXP product that we exclusively offer with the freightliner chassis. And on this particular product that we have, we offer a five-year, one hundred thousand mile warranty on the freightliner chassis. We're the only company that can offer that purely based on volume. We, every, every other chassis that you're going to buy on a freightliner is going to have a three-year standard manufacturer warranty on it. And we offer the five-year, one hundred thousand mile warranty. That's great when your truck, you know, four, five years old, you've still got some warranty left on it, your freightliner dealer can step in and help you out with that, with those products. Own warranty, uh, and service, we're a one-stop shop. I don't want you having to, if you have a hail pump problem or a freightliner problem, I don't want you calling everybody under the sun. You call one person, we'll take care of that problem for you. As far as even if it has to go back to the dealership, we'll set that appointment up for you or line that up for you. We currently sold you the truck that is being finished up right now at our Houston facility. It was a stock unit. Uh, we took that truck and added features to it that would better suit the fire department. The truck is currently about ninety-nine point nine percent finished. We are waiting on some valves from Akron, Ohio, from Akron Brass Company to come in to complete the installation on the booster reel. We anticipated the truck getting finished today. As of today, we still don't have the valve from Akron. Their excuse is weather. We're waiting on the valve. Truck is ready and ready and ready and ready, except for the valve. Uh, as soon as it comes in, they'll bolt it up, truck will head back this way. Uh, with our trucks, uh, every shift or three days or however you guys want to work it out, we offer full training with our trucks. We have a factory representative come in and train you on every single aspect of the truck. They'll do a PowerPoint presentation with all three shifts and, uh, for every volunteer, he'll probably be here at least two days so everybody can come in and get training on the truck from the general operation of the truck and what you should and shouldn't do when you crank it up, all the way down to the foam system to pumper the truck. He'll do everything on it. Even the electronics, he'll explain in detail the def, the regen, all those systems that you may not be familiar with. Some of you that don't drive big trucks or newer ones, it's, it's, it's a real problem these days on fire apparatus. And at this point, there's nothing we can do about it. Nobody builds a truck that you can't run deaf in yet. Um, with that being said, our product line is huge. We've built everything from a small brush truck on Ford chassis up to the biggest ladder trucks on the ground. We build everything ourselves when it comes to a full apparatus. We build our own chassis, we build our own pumps, we build our own foam systems, we build, we're, we're a full manufacturer, uh, that does that. You know, this truck out here that I brought is a base model truck. It, it is, it sits somewhere around, when it comes off the factory floor, that product sits somewhere around two hundred to two hundred and twenty thousand dollars in the price range. And you can take it and we can do exactly what you did to your last truck and you can pick and choose options that you want to put on the truck to better suit your, your needs. That is a base truck. So when you see it, it doesn't have a lot of the stuff that your other truck had on it. You could certainly add anything you want to those trucks.
What kind of pumps on that?
That truck has a hail, uh, five hundred GPM PTO pump, which does offer the pump and roll. We can go up to a thousand GPM pump in that particular truck.
So it is strictly just a tanker, it's not a pump tanker?
It, it has, it can pump five hundred gallons a minute and it has discharges just like a standard pumper does.
If the thousand GPM would be more of what you were talking about.
You have to, you have to get up.
Correct. For a class A pumper, you have to have at least seven hundred and fifty GPM pump.
Once you get to a thousand.
Correct. That's not a problem, that's just.
I thought that was twelve hundred.
Seven fifty would, uh, to be a class A pump.
But that, man, I say, well, I go, and I'm taking my opinion.
Yes, sir.
It is strictly, you know, we need pump and tanker.
Correct. That's, that is easily done. That truck can be built with a thousand GPM pump. I can build a brand new one with a two thousand GPM pump, if that's what you prefer. Um, just kind of up to what's, what's, that's just what I had on hand when I asked to bring something down.
Class A, we're going to have to have room for the air packs?
Correct. If you make it a class A pumper, you're going to have to have everything on it that a class A pumper has, or you're really kind of defeating the purpose of getting a thousand gallon pump if it won't carry all the equipment.
Right.
Wednesday, I'm trading that truck to my coworker for another truck similar to the one you guys bought, a pumper, um, that I'll be running up through this way for the next probably two or three weeks if y'all, you know, I, I'll stop by anytime, uh, I think I came by four or five times with the last truck. If anybody wants to come by after work and take a look at it, I don't have a problem doing that.
It's in use though.
It's a regular pumper. It is a four-door freightliner FXP pumper. I have a two-door, I have a side mount, two-door top mount. These are stock units that we run around in. We're a custom manufacturer. If you want to sit down and spec out a truck and build it from the ground up, that's what we do ninety-eight percent of the time. Demo trucks are a very small part of the business, but a lot of rural areas buy the demos because work's been done. But it's really up to you on how, how you want to do.
You got a bit of prices?
I have, on what?
A hundred fifty gallon, twelve hundred fifty GPM, twelve hundred.
Sure, I can, I can work up prices on that.
That's on the top of your head.
Yeah, off the top of my head, a, a truck like that, I mean, you're looking at, to go up a thousand GPM, to go up another five hundred GPM to a thousand GPM pump, you're not talking very much, maybe five grand. Just whatever the price of the pump is.
I'm talking about.
Two, two, about two twenty now is a big.
I'm talking about truck you're going to be coming in.
Mm-hmm. Two hundred and thirty thousand dollars. I've got a two-door just like it for two hundred and seventeen. That's a side mount. I've got a top-mounted pump just like it, sitting on my lot in Houston. It's two hundred and, two twenty-two. Those are all baseline prices. Uh, I think the truck that we started with on yours was what?
Well, it was way up there and then y'all came down because it's the end of the year, you came down to almost two forty something.
Two forty and then we added back around.
Back to two fifty-seven.
Two fifty-seven, uh, by the time we finished adding scene lights, booster reel, suction, uh, whatever else we added to the truck, I think we ended up at a total of two fifty-seven. Any of those trucks that I have currently would be, if I added everything I added to this truck would be less because we started at a higher base price on that particular truck. Every truck I have in stock now would be less than two fifty with everything that we added to his truck. That's just what I have on the ground. I have access to probably fifty stock trucks between all over the U.S. I have a list, I just have to get my hands on and see what I have. Today, we sell about ten of these stock units a day all over the U.S. If I had a customer that was really interested in looking at a particular stock truck, I can make a phone call and have one sent this way.
Is, is there, uh, is it possible to take, to pump a tanker, a single cab and make a class A pumper out of it? With all the equipment that has to be thrown?
Single cab, a single cab class A pumper tanker? Sure.
That's what we got aside.
How much water are you wanting to carry?
Twenty-five hundred and better.
Twenty-five. Here's your cutoff. Two thousand one hundred gallons is the max we can put on a single axle. Anything above that, we go to tandem.
It's tandem axle.
Okay, I go up to three thousand gallons on a tandem axle and put high-side compartments up both sides of the ladders through the rear, just like his other truck, and then we can do them all day long. Uh, look, that's the truck that's sitting out there. It would look more like that with tandem axles. Uh, and I brought these brochures. This is just a Pierce commercial pumper and a Pierce commercial tanker, one on each side. The, the tanker can look just like that pumper, except bigger than the maxels to make it a class A pumper tanker. Uh, I can go up to fifteen hundred GPM on the pump, no problem, three thousand gallons of water stored down both sides. You have all your air packs, it'd look just like a big pump.
That's what we need.
Yes, not a problem at all. We do them all the time and a lot of people, a lot of people want to go that route, set up a pumper into tanker.
Yeah, rural, it's like rural area.
Right.
Most times tanker going around with it, but the more water you carry, the better off it.
Yes, sir. And one thing that we're pushing these days real heavy and hard is these Husky foam systems that we, that we manufacture and even foam pro, and a lot of people do, you double your water volume, so if you have a thousand gallons of water and a, and a foam system on your truck, you're in essence carrying two thousand gallons of water. Body power.
What about cab systems? Have y'all got integrated cab systems?
Sure, we make our own cab systems. We also sell hail waters cab systems.
Ken, for me, I know we hadn't, we hadn't had good luck with the cab system we have on this little truck out here, but I've been seeing some of the newer cab systems. You can take a two and a half inch line running cabs and one person can move that line around.
Yes, but you were talking a price point going from, in the neighborhood of ten thousand dollars for a proportioning system to upwards closer to forty and fifty thousand dollars a cab, a full-blown cab system on a class A pumper. It's an expensive option. It's really popular in Texas because they're, Louisiana's the only state on PIAL, their own rules. Everybody else is ISO. They get huge points for a cab system in Texas. It, it makes their fire trucks go boom in points, so they're worth the money over there.
Well, I think our next rating is.
Is ISO.
Is ISO.
What is that thing going to ISO?
Correct. If you go to ISO, you won't cast on everything you got because the amount of points you get on is just outrageous. Uh, everybody in Texas, rural or not, no matter the size of the truck, just about everybody over there is going to cabs. And, uh, I just sold the identical truck to your, the guy that wanted your truck. Y'all were battling back and forth on who was going to buy. He didn't buy, he bought another one, identical to it, that came off the line, it comes off the line in April, and he added a thirty thousand dollar cab system to this truck. He's in Dyball, Texas. Identical truck. And, uh, they just get massive, massive points over there. Couple of things we do a little different than everybody else, uh, our warranties are very strong warranties, our standard paint corrosion warranties are ten years, our structural warranties are twenty and twenty-five. All of our plumbing on all of our trucks is stainless steel standard, no black iron. Nobody in the industry does warranties that strong or stainless steel plumbing standard. We do a lot of things that set us apart. We believe if we do it right, do it really, really right the first time, we have less problems with that product down the road. Something that's helped Pierce, being in the fire truck business for over a hundred years and other companies are falling out right and left, uh, just something that we, we like to do.
Yeah, one.
You want still in business, they are not always in a state contract. You can buy, you want a truck in this state, you would have to go to bid. Uh, everybody else here is on state contract.
I remember the one big company I thought would win more than I would.
American La France.
That's a good one.
They were a huge player for a long, long time.
Been there for many, many years.
Yes.
I thought it was company left then.
We are. We were in business a hundred and one years this year. We had our one hundred year anniversary of building fire trucks last year. Pierce is owned by Oshkosh Corporation. Oshkosh Corporation is the largest vehicle manufacturer for the United States military, period. We build all the medium duty and all the heavy-duty vehicles for them, all the big MRACs, all the big trucks that move everything. Oshkosh Division builds those. We utilize a lot of their technology, uh, in our suspensions and stuff that have been really tried and true and tested. Uh, we have two other divisions. We have McNeeless, which is the largest, uh, dump truck manufacturer in the country. And then, uh, JLG, the, uh, booms, lift, lift man lifts and stuff like that. Those are the divisions that Oshkosh currently is under their umbrella. And they try to keep it in the, you know, similar type things where they can share technology. We build all of our own ladders, uh, we build pumps, tanks. We're, we're the only sole manufacturer that can build a fire truck from the chassis to the back, other than your basic, you know, running gear and engine.
And bio.
Correct. Uh, now, we, we do offer, not in commercial cabs, but we, we, it's still the only manufacturer that can offer Detroit decently with, if you were going to a custom. But Cummins is about the only player now. Allison's the only player in the transmissions now. Any questions?
That does, what's up? I didn't hear anybody.
Thank y'all, I appreciate the time. Like I said, I'll be back. Uh, chief can give a hope to me. If anybody wants to look at that truck I'm running through here with next week, I'll have it all for the next couple of weeks. Here's a couple of brochures on that tanker out there. And then the brochures I left on just a basic pumper tanker there. And more specific, we have, I could overload you with brochure, but I know you don't want to. Thank y'all.
Thank you very much. Did you send the next one in for me, Mike?
Sir?
Send the next guy in?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Did you leave somebody else?
Come on. Fresh meat.
Don't say it like that.
Aw, man.
That's kind of.
Which ones the board members and which ones not?
There are some new faces over here that I haven't seen. I'll just lay these out here, these are. Everybody. And I'll leave some calendars, some more literature.
Some of y'all may know me, some of you may not. I'm Stephen Mopkin, I represent, uh, Bob Venture. Uh, I've worked with several of you guys, I've worked with y'all back there. I gave y'all some packets that tell you a little bit about us, uh, what are some of the things we do, uh, our trucks, how many different varieties of trucks we, uh, we have. I also have a drawing in there that's from a truck Charlie and I worked on. It's, uh, I think that truck came in about three hundred, Charlie?
Two ninety-seven, I believe.
Two ninety-seven, before that truck came in.
You say it's now about three oh one, but.
I think it's, uh, somewhere if, if those increases are right. We can make changes on that truck if you would feel interested in that truck. It's a pretty nice truck, but it, Charlie, we had, we had four out this for foam, uh, had real nice lighting on it, far as sunny lighting goes. Uh, we offer some, uh, we offer some other options too. Uh, I know Troy, you had talked about, you know, gallons. What kind of gallons are, are we looking at this next go rate?
Twenty-five hundred or better, I think.
Twenty-five hundred or better. Okay. We do anything over two thousand gallons, it's going to be on tandem axle truck, okay? So that's going to, that's going to course up the price a little because we're going to a heavier truck. And once we get over twenty-five hundred gallons, we'll be doing at least double frame rails, maybe triple, depending on the weight, uh, at all, at all opinions. That's, uh, that's the truck right there that he's looking at. That's over freightliner chassis.
Front bumper extension.
Front bumper extension, that one has both crossways in the front bumper. Uh, has an extendable deck gun on the double E's, if I remember correctly. And I'll leave some calendars and some more literature.
Some of y'all may know me, some of you may not. I'm Stephen Mopkin, I represent Bob Venture. I've worked with several of you guys, I've worked with y'all on the back there. I gave y'all some packets that tell you a little bit about us, what are some of the things we do. Our trucks, how many different varieties of trucks we, uh, we have. I also have a drawing in there that's from a truck Charlie and I worked on. It's, uh, I think that truck came in about three hundred, Charlie?
Two ninety-seven, I believe.
Two ninety-seven, before that truck came in.
You say it's now about three oh one, but...
I think it's somewhere, if those increases are right. We can make changes on that truck if you were willing to do that truck. It's pretty nice truck, but it, Charlie, we had, we had four out this for foam. Had real nice lighting on it, as far as setting lighting goes. We offer some, uh, we offer some other options too. I know Troy, you had talked about, you know, gallons. What kind of gallons are, are we looking at this Mexico rate?
Twenty-five hundred or better, I think.
Twenty-five hundred or better, okay. We do anything over two thousand gallons, it's gonna be on tandem axle truck, okay? So that's gonna, that's gonna force up the price a little, but we're going to a heavier truck. And once we get over twenty-five hundred gallons, we'll be doing at least double frame rails, maybe triple, depending on the weight. At all, at all opinions. That's, uh, that's the truck right there that he's looking at. That's over freight liner chassis.
Front bumper extension.
Front bumper extension, that one has both crossways in the front bumper. Uh, has an extendable deck gun on the double E's. If I remember correctly. Yeah.
And also has the swivel dump chute.
Has the swivel dump chute on the rear where you can dunk directly out of the back or you can run it off the side and you can pull up the side of your tank and dunk.
You're looking at a tail of twelve hundred fifty GPM pumper.
Right. Right. And the pumps, you can do golly, you can do hail, you can do waters, you can do a rosin biker. They're all very comparable in price. As far as the pump goes, the GPM on it, uh, twelve hundred, twelve fifty to fifteen hundred, almost the same price. It's up to you about how you wanna do that on a truck. Would you say, Troy?
I was gonna ask Ken, what did y'all just get? Did y'all just buy from Steve? The gold on them, they just bought, y'all bought two of these?
Two of them, Troy. We've got service guys out here running the road. Uh, we also have a extra service guy about eighty miles from here, he's over in Columbia. Uh, he catches us up when we get behind. He's an SAE, EVT certified mechanic. Uh, he was the head mechanic at the Monroe Shop. Dennis, uh, Dennis Kelly is his name. We've used him quite often. We come to you every chance we get. You buy a truck, brand new, you probably will have an issue or two before the warranty goes out. This, this probably won't happen. So, you know, when we drive them back, we drive them close to a thousand miles. If there's something that'll shake loose, it'll shake loose before we get here. And hopefully we can, we can fix those problems. Anything in particular y'all have any questions on? Of course, we can do these trucks and, uh, you know, an extended cab or a four door chassis if you like. We can, we can change them up however you, you know, it's a custom business. We can put the crossways, then the bumper, we can do speed lane, we can do the top mount, we can, we can do it just however you, you wanna do it. Anything else?
Anybody have any questions, Paul, man? Okay. Now, you guys are here.
I gotcha.
That's a sale.
No, last, last time I was here for a board meeting, it was quite an experience.
And you're on State Contract, right?
And we are on State Contract.
So this particular truck that we've been looking at, that I had just had the stuff here for, put it aside. And, and everything that changes, if there's some things that aren't on State Contract, what, is there a percentage that y'all can...
Yeah.
Explain how that works a little bit.
Okay, we're, we're allowed, I believe, up to, up to fifteen percent over that. And that's, that's with anything. I mean, you can add equipment to the truck. Even if it's equipment I don't sell, you decide to buy a truck on State Contract and you want to put MSA air packs on it. We can buy those air packs for you and put them on there. We'll buy off of your, your vendor, whoever that, whoever that happens to be. But, uh, State Contract allows us to make, make a great deal of changes. We can add a lot of cost to a truck if, if you want. The way the State Contract is set up, it has some, uh, other items that aren't listed. And that's where that falls in at. And you can be, you can be very liberal with it. You can, you can make a lot of changes to that truck. And again, you can, you can equip it with, with your hoes, your nozzles, the whole nine yards. You can add that into the cost of it and do it all at once if you choose to do that. Especially if you're gonna buy, say you're buying four or five air packs and putting the foot down it and all that. It's gonna go over thirty thousand dollars, which if you were buying, you know, out on your own, you're in a position where you're gonna have to bid that. You add it to that State Contract and you don't have to bid that. It folds right into the truck, comes out of the State Contract, just like it's part of the truck, so. I think the old Vala who bought theirs all State Contract, haven't... Yeah, we did, yeah.
And he said something about they finance them, I mean, I know they may not need to, but...
They gonna send, he's gonna send a financer up there, I guess our next board meeting.
Yeah, probably DC Greer.
Yeah.
Tell you a little bit about financing, what's going on right now. There's, there's some tools on the internet that can help you with this. If you're facing aging fleet of trucks and you're trying to save enough money every year to buy a truck. But say you're only able to save two hundred and ninety thousand, but the trucks will cost you three hundred and twenty. It's, it's hard to ever get to that point because by the time you get to that three twenty, the trucks went up another five thousand dollars or more. And it keeps doing that. Save versus finance. Sometimes it's cheaper to finance a truck. If you're having to, to wait these long periods, if you have a lot of maintenance costs going. And finance is cheap right now. It's anywhere from three to four and a half percent, depending on what you're doing and how far you're going out. They'll finance these trucks. They'll finance a pumper out to twelve years, I think, fifteen in some cases, if you want, if you wanna do that. Depending on, depending on how you wanna do it. You don't make a payment on them till they get delivered or as far as the year after it gets delivered. You will pay the interest on that, that's their oil and with it. Most of these, most of these finance companies are, are investor backed with, uh, tax free bonds. So you, you save a great deal of money, they can. You do some finance rates usually that nobody else does. We even had a bank over in Cachata. Guys wanted to do their money local. DC Greer, same guy coming down to Sealyum. He actually made a deal with their bank and they loaned him the money on, on the tax free, because it's a municipal loan. And he was able to loan the money, DC was, to the department, cheaper than what the bank originally did. Just because of the way he set it.
All right. Now, your truck, you're Rosenbauer, now, you're, you're, you're locals to this state.
I am local.
Where is your company, where, I mean...
Our company's in Ray, Louisiana. We're a little over a hundred miles from here. We've got a Tin Bay, Tin Bay State, uh, Station, Tin Bay Shop down there. We've got EVT mechanics, uh, we've got our equipment down there.
EVT, emergency vehicle technician?
Emergency vehicle technician. There's several categories taking off being certified in and we've got, we've got guys certified in several of those.
Okay, so Ray, that's not that far of a drive.
No, it's not.
It's just down I forty-nine a little bit.
We've, we've got a lot of trucks up through here and on over in the western part of the state.
What kind of, do you, do you send your service guys up this way?
We send them, we'll send them this way or we, I don't, has Dennis ever come down and work for you or you know?
No, he hasn't come.
Okay.
I think he has over on, uh, Fort, uh, Maggots over there.
Yeah, he has, he has. And, uh, we've been, this guy's super. We've been very, very fortunate to get ahold of him. He's also worked on his own one out there.
And you're local, you're like John.
I'm live in Johnstall, that's where I live. I've been calling on Wind Parish for six or seven years now, uh, and coming through here. Wind Parish has been good to me and I've tried to be good back. Uh, one of the things I'll say about myself, I come from the fire department, still active in the fire department, still on calls. Served on fire boards before. I've sat on your side of the table. I, uh, I try to be the buffer between y'all and Rosenbauer. And I'm gonna stand up for you every time. I assure you of that. I've got to live here.
And where are these trucks made at?
They're made in South Dakota. So, uh, it would be a, be a nice little trip for someone if they wanna go do a final inspection, especially if you go in December when it's, uh... I was there in January and they actually closed schools. It was nineteen degrees below zero, the windshield was thirty-nine below zero. But those guys, they work, they, they keep on working. It'll make Louisiana home sweet home, stay up there long enough, so.
All right, all right, well, appreciate you coming in.
Well, thank y'all, my card's there individually. If y'all wanna call, got any questions, I mean, there, there's no question you should be afraid or ashamed to ask. Just ask me and I'll, I'll try and help you get through it best I can. And, you know, if you want to go a little further, yes, I will give y'all some references, some guys that you can see that's, uh, been using our trucks and had experience with us and had been through the buying process with. So, and if I need to have DC or, I've got a couple of finance people. One of those finance people come to me.
I was just curious, uh, 'cause I knew they were doing, I'm just curious how it works, just...
Well, some people are on a situation where they're trying to buy trucks, you know, every year or two and they get into a case where they got, they got six or seven trucks they need to replace. And they can't do it all at one time like that. They figure out it's cheaper for them, a lot of them run, it's gonna be cheaper or the same cost to finance that truck. And get those, get all those trucks at one time. I don't know if that's something y'all were thinking about or whatever, but...
I've just heard about it.
It's food, it's food for thought because, uh, a lot of people are taking advantage of it now because, uh, I know the little, little dial money I got in the bank on the, on the CD. They just, uh, they send me a little slip every, every so often, just as a courtesy, I think, you know? Because I'm not gaining any grand folks, I finish not making any money, so. People are more willing to loan you money at three, three and a half percent right now.
All right, thank you, Steve.
Appreciate it, thank y'all. And I do appreciate all y'all's past business. I hope you were satisfied with the money and everything I tried to do. Like I said, anybody got any questions, Steve, you're free to give me a call. Thank y'all.
This is everybody on the board?
Yes, sir.
If you don't mind, just pass the calendar around, please, I'm gonna give y'all some more information. Chief?
Thank you, sir.
Here's a book for it. What do we got now, everybody? Perfect. Well, I know I'm the last person here, so he's probably ready to go, but I'll make it fairly quick. I'm Shane Delaney, I'm with Ferrer Fire Apparatus. I live in, uh, and this is Courtney Butcher. And this is Mr. Wade, he drove the truck up for me, much appreciated. Courtney's full-time firefighter at Bojor City and he's, uh, sells equipment for us part-time. We both live in Bojor Parish and I live in Benton and he lives in the Houghton area. Our factory is in South Louisiana, it's off of I-12, if you've ever been down that way, close to Hammond. We manufacture, we're a family-owned company. The owner started, and that's in, in the book here, I know everybody didn't have it, but that article up front is a story how he got started. And I'll say that it was a, uh, he was a pipe fitter and he was a volunteer fireman anyway, started building and where we're at, we're now. I'm very fortunate, I've been working here eighteen years and I have a lot of good customers. And then I have other, uh, places like y'all's that I would like to earn your business. To get down to what we were talking, what y'all are probably here for, is that truck outside that I brought today is two thousand gallon tanker. I put the specifications in their shop order to tell you more about it. That truck is sold, but they could build you one and, um, from pre-construction, we got some chassis coming in, so probably about four months in that area. Things can change because of chassis coming in and stuff. We are a custom builder, we're different, a lot of other people, we use different metals. We use extruded aluminum, uh, body, a gavenial steel, which is modular, and then a modular aluminum body and stainless steel that we sell a lot on the East Coast. We are, like I said, a custom builder to where I can, we can build the truck if it can be engineered to your specifications. Can sit down with y'all, you can build your own truck and at the end of the day, you will know how much that truck's gonna be and you'll have your own set of specifications. We do have other demos available now too. And I can email, um, I can email Chief once things change. But as far as the, um, uh, commercial side of it, we, we, right now, we only have one two-door freightliner, thousand, or twelve fifty water, twelve fifty pump. And that's in Texas right now. Uh, we do have chassis on the lot and it would just depend on what GBW that you're gonna build or the time period that it would take to, to build it.
And, and one of our board members, he thinks we're probably looking more for the pumper tanker combination now. And needing probably to get some pricing on something like that in the near future. And I know y'all can make anything, obviously.
Yes, sir.
What benefits combined from y'all, what do you, I mean, you're in state, obviously, so it's already a Louisiana-built product, it's State Contract.
The benefits from, from buying from us would be, we, we are in the state and, and not just to, to... Just to use as an excuse for you to buy, but what that means is you can come to our plant to do a pre-construction. You can come to the plant, and of course you can at these other places, it's just take you a while. And you come to the plant and do a final inspection. Also, if you ever had a truck that needed to go back to the plant or either wreck or something that needs to be repaired that you can't do in the field, then you have a plant that's close.
About four hours?
Yes, or about four hours. The other aspect is our, our service guy works directly for us and he lives in Bojor Parish as well. Not to say he can't be in Oklahoma one day, but he's usually very good in response time. And, uh, he works out of his, uh, out of his vehicle. And you can, like all of us, I believe, my competitors, you can buy off Lamont, the, um, State Contract, so to say. And most trucks you're, you would be able to, to build up to the, to the State Contract, because you can, you can... Most configurations, you'd still be in State Contract area. I put a couple of drawings in the, in there as well on trucks that I have sold myself. I was going through there, I wanted to put that I sold in case there was any questions on it. But there's like a pumper, there's a, there's a full tanker in there that Cato thirty-six five has, it's a pumper tanker, three thousand gallons. But we can, we can build whatever normally, um, whatever you need if it can be engineered.
So basically, we, we've now had everybody kinda give us an idea, we, we know what's available, what's closed. And I guess it's complete some more research for our part. And, uh, believe me, hang, I'll probably be calling on y'all to get some ideas and whatnot.
And I would love to offer the invitation to, and I know it's tough because people have regular jobs, but, um, for your board or if you're gonna have a committee, a truck committee, to go to the plant one day to see it. Now, I, I do have the advantage, me being close, because y'all can drive to it, but still you could see some ideas. Thank you. And, um, and our website has a lot of, um, trucks that have been delivered, uh, over the years and in production now. It's another thing that you can view is your truck being built via the website.
Oh, okay.
They update it about every two or three days, so.
And I, I looked at y'all's truck out there. I know that truck's maybe not be exactly what we're looking at there, but I was looking at the build quality, I was looking at the switches, how y'all build in the dash. I liked some of the stuff, I took some pictures and I'll be able to look at that, but that's what I was, you know, you know, this truck here may not be exactly what we want. He's also, you, you're gonna try to come up with something similar to that other pumper tanker out there maybe for?
Yeah, I, I can do that. I can, uh, I took some pictures over to see if, if we can, I, I would think we can, that we would be able to build and, um...
See what y'all's price range, how that works.
Yeah.
I guess that would be something that would be under State Contract, or would that be able to fall under State Contract?
That probably would be, I'd have to look, but on that truck, you, you've got a poly, what we call that, that truck's called what you call a website. Cause you have the tank and they, they have painted the tank. So you've got the poly upper, which is the tank's built out, and then you've got the poly hose bed. And yeah, we can do that. If, if you were gonna build a high side compartment on that left to make it a pumper tanker, then that... And yeah, we can do that, if, if you were gonna build a high-side compartment on that left to make it a pumper tanker, then that would all be metal. That would be, um, either gavineal steel or aluminum, extruded aluminum. We use, all of our high-side compartment doors are all three sixteen cents aluminum, regardless of you have a steel body. But you could do that, and you could do like the rack on the side, like you said, for a dump tank rack, um, to where it'd be electrically lifted down for you, which is, that is smart, to do that. Yes, sir.
Any other questions?
Well, we appreciate the opportunity, and, um, thank y'all very much. Thank you. Y'all have a good evening.
Thank you.
That's the last one, sir. Kaplan's is Alexandria's Uniform Shop, and we had a badge from Mr. Harry and some other...
Was still using that for the pages? I didn't even know we did this to you.
Uh, he is, he has now been gone for three years, and is...
That's legal to buy now when he's been out there.
Try, I sent him the pageant for a moment, we had used to send it, you, you're in your pager phone.
Right, that's just a...
And the, the radio, that seven hundred radio was under state contract price, and then he came, they had a, Kim, Kim would have a sale on portables, and I talked to several of y'all, and y'all, that the prices they were, we went ahead and got a few extra portables, and that's what you're seeing there. The radios. That was those heaters, and then we came up with a little problem with them, and we were trying to talk to them about something that was customer order. I'm gonna probably try to work something up to use them as best we can in some of the other stations. And we're still trying another heater from Mr. Billy's station, he wanted to try a, what kind of?
Radiant.
A radiant heat, and we ran into some issues with it, hook, hook and add up.
Have we done paid for the caterers, sir?
We paid a down payment because the price of meat was so high. I, at that time, I, I got ahold of Mike, and, um, I think one other board member, he wanted to know if we could get a down payment so he could order the meat. He ordered fifteen...
How mu, how mu, I don't have one to back, we're gonna talk, talk, fifteen dollars a person.
Fifteen dollars a person, and we're estimating two hundred people. Cranford was, is gonna help with this side for the sheriff's people, so we'll get some of that back.
All right, most of the money?
Sir.
Uh, new fire chief of Calvin.
Well, obviously, Mr. John Henry's sitting here, and I guess you decided to retire, sir. And we got a letter from, uh, the Village of Calvin, resolution number one for twenty fifteen, where is the present fire chief, John Henry Martin. Second, um, uh, is retiring from that position, therefore, it'd be resolved at the Village of Calvin Council. Hereby, I would appoint Bill Martin to serve as fire chief of volunteer fire department. And, um, it was voted and elected by City of Calvin, Village of Calvin, to put, um, the bill and the, uh, the Bill Martin to take John Henry's place. Mr. John Henry, I want to say congratulations on retiring, and thanks for a job well done.
I had took him over that week, and we had that far over on, fleeing let over on the, the dump, and, uh, I was walking around down there, and I give out, and I sit down on the truck, I couldn't even get up in the truck. And I sat down on the floorboard until I could get the shrink back up, and then I got up the truck and went back home, and I went to the, soon as they met, I went to them and told them that I was resigning, remember, and then somebody else had it. I stay on the fire department, but I ain't gonna be chief no more.
Does everybody know Bill is your son?
Yeah. He's been working with Parker a good while.
Yeah, oh, yeah, I, I know, boy, he's a good boy. All righty, uh, let's see, we got like most of it accepted ourselves, I think.
I guess we would.
I saw many of them. So, most of the same, from seven, Bill Martin, fire chief of Calvin. All in favor of that? All right, P I A L.
All right, P I A L has really came out with wanting lots of information. This here, so far, is what we've come up with for them. They just want more and more and more information. We're still making some contact with the different water systems around, I've gotta go out and get some pictures of the different water systems yet, get their daily average consumption. Part of the thing that they're wanting, they're wanting all the fire trucks, sheets, pictures, we're getting all that done, so that'll help rhyme with him. We've been working real hard at it, um, unfortunately, I, I, with, um, Dustin Parker having his baby this week, he had to be up for that, and we had had Heath, uh, been filling in, coming in, working on P I A L with us, and then he had to fill the shift for Dustin. So he ended up getting a little bit of overtime. We're in the middle of P I A L, I, I, I had called Kenneth Ray and let him know, we will try not to do that anymore, but we're still gonna use as many of the volunteers that are, we have part-time paid people, because this, we, we got an extension, and even as much as this looks, we still probably need to have about another inch worth of paperwork for this to get this done.
You got seventeen days left, huh?
I have seventeen days, yes, sir.
All right.
And we are working hard on it.
May I make a suggestion?
Yes, sir.
Right now, to me, need to concentrate totally on that.
Yes, sir.
All about the other trucks, maybe something breaks down, but...
That, that's...
That's got to be done.
That's got to be done.
According to that re, letter I read, if it ain't done, we S O L.
We S O L, so that is it, that is our main drive around here every day. And that will get in the mail, I'm gonna try to get it in the mail, I'm hoping to get it in the mail before maybe the twenty-sixth or twenty-seventh, what my goal is. We're not looking too bad on it, uh, we, we went through, we've, we've done most of the work, we've just gotta get it recorded the way that they want it recorded. And I, I've talked to Randy Lowe every day on the phones about, trying to make sure that we're getting this right. He's gonna let, let us do some of it on the computer, we still have to have a hardbound copy that has to be mailed and signed, because that's how they verify that this is all above board, we do have, um, two affidavits that I'll have to sign. And I'll, I think I'm the signing agent on those, if not, I'll be tracking you down. I've done tracking down two or three times to get a signature on stuff. But P I A L is going good right now, it's just a lot to it, a lot more than I ever imagined. Part of the thing going on with P I A L, and that's gonna be another, number eight on the agenda tonight is mutual aid agreements, we'll talk about that in a little bit, but I've found that we're lacking a few mutual aid agreements. So, I, I've got a list of who I'd like to get some with here in a little bit, and I will talk about that in a minute. The current mutual aids that we do have on file... Now, it's not to say that we don't have them, but I just can't find records of them. And I found, I had to have copies of all the mutual aid agreements, and some of these mutual aid agreements are actually between the different volunteer fire departments in them. I don't know if it was before the fire district was formed, but we got Town of Olive and the Joyce Fire Department. That was signed, well, that was effective oh-five, but I, I'm, I'm still thinking it's part of the district. Tullis and Wind Parish Fire District Three, Georgetown and the Fire District Three, Montgomery and St. Maurice, Wind Parish School Board, and the Cypress Creek Station, I think that's part of an agreement because they own the land that it's on. Uh, Wind Correctional Center, we have a mutual aid agreement with them, Winfield Fire Department, Viambel Parish Ward Seven, Viambel Parish Ward Four, Veldona District Two, wherever Mr., uh, Grant Parish District Seven, Grant Parish District Two, Montgomery and Atlanta. So I'd like them.
That's the ones you're lacking?
No, that's what, that's the only ones I can find, the actual physical copies of the mutual aid agreement.
There's one from Dotson and Sykes, I know, but they lost it, yes.
So, I don't know where they are in the records, I'm, I'm looking for them. That's just something I won't, that's something that we'll do as part of following through. Is I would like to probably go with, um...
Wind Parish Fire?
Grant Parish Fire District Four, Georgetown, um, Montgomery, updated, Johnsburg Fire Department, Jackson Ward Four, Weston. I'm not so sure about Gina, uh, Olive and Tullis, I'd definitely like to get, I'd like to get one with Natchitoches Fire. Oh, I'm looking around, it's the stars. Johnsburg, Gina, Urania, Eden Fellowship, I think I'd like to get one with them.
The Dela Page, if I'm not mistaken, do that one page, they got their own board, don't they?
I bet so.
Yeah, they, they have multiple, they don't have one fire district, but they have multiple fire districts. They have Ward Four, Ward Two, and we don't probably need one here as Vernon Kelly and... I'm just trying to get the ones that are close by, and then the other ones I wanna look for are like Pineville, I'd like to do with Lincoln Parish, and I'd like to do Natchitoches Fire Department, and one, probably one more of the Natchitoches Fire Protection Districts, like Clarence, that are close by. And it's just...
Lincoln Parish, you'll, you'll page up, we'll page you.
And, but if they're another individual fire district that's parish-wide like we are, and they have some other good resources that we could use. Um, I also wanna do with like England Air Park, so in case anything happens where we need a big crash rescue truck, they, they could come, so. I mean, I, I, I'll have to make calls and see, but that's, I just need y'all's permission, I guess, to go ahead and start looking into that, I don't think it has to be voted on, I think just they go to do it. But that is P I A L, we are working on it, it's getting thicker and thicker, and, um, it's making phone calls, trying to find people, Heath has been on the phone call, well, you know, he's tracked down, um, um, Bobby, Bobby Bowles, he's tracked down the different bayers, and he got ahold of you, I think, one time about the Calvin water system, I do need...
You told me he needed information, I called him and given it to him.
Okay, but...
I was gonna tell you, if you need any, uh, need any help contacting some of these other fire districts, or water districts, and old water pump, just boards, holler at me.
Okay, I do need...
If there's some that you don't, that you're not able to get ahold of.
We got some that are having difficulty getting.
And we need to know their average daily consumption, how much water they got on hand at all times, just lots of information that we need for that. We'll get with you on that. So, that's, that's where P I A L stands, we are working on it, it is taking up pretty much all of our time, and now it will take up all our time at this point forward.
All right, uh, buildings.
Buildings, all right, I've got a price to move the building in Wheeling that y'all had asked about at the last meeting, it's a thousand dollars. At that price, I'm not so sure that it's, I don't know what to do, I'll let y'all think about it. How big is that, Brian?
I believe it was sixteen or twenty-four, um, wood structure, wood frame, shinglue. It's got a little bathroom offset to it, but, um, kinda assessed it over to see what kind of repairs it would take to, you know, a lot of it's gonna back, you have to back up to decide, first of all, what the need is for it, and what you're gonna purpose it for. And then it will determine how far you need to take the repairs into it, you know? Uh, as a minimum, to get it to, even just to use it as a storage, you're looking at about three thousand dollars just to do repairs.
Might be worth it, yeah.
And if you take it into an office stage, well, you know, you can double that.
The, the page on that right now, they might be...
Of course, now, if, if you, if you evaluate the, the space that you would use for storage versus building something to store in, then, you know, you're still looking at a structure that that's, it's that age, and you don't know what it could be compromised by in the moving process.
Take it off this place, worry about it.
All right, where are Houser?
All right, I mean, I just still got one more thing, um, at the last meeting, we had looked at getting a, um, shelter for the tankers, and as you were talking, we had approved buying that building, but you described that you wanted the structure to be wide enough to put the two trucks in. We went out and measured that night and found out that an eighteen-foot wide building would not be wide enough. So we have not bought anything, I called Brian Montgomery and told him, and he said I needed to bring it back for y'all. So, we got the other two bids to get, one that's twenty-four foot wide, we got one from American Steel, and we got one from Eagle Carports. That's the only two, I'm trying to make sure I'm looking at this right, because I was trying to, trying to do the math, and Eagle Carports is a twenty-four by sixty with twelve-foot side legs. And he's quoting anchors twelve at, uh, twenty-five dollars each to add three hundred dollars to his price, so... I thought I added this all up, no, yeah, his total price comes out with these anchors to ninety-eight fifty-five. But he doesn't have a wind warranty. The other building is twenty-four by sixty-one, twelve-foot size, twelve-foot gauge, twelve-foot leg height, and twenty-two mobile home anchors at twenty-five dollars each, to give a ninety mile an hour wind warranty for a total price of ten two twenty-five.
Ten two twenty-five, how much is the other one?
Ninety-eight fifty-five.
Ninety-eight fifty-five.
If you add the extra anchors on to the cheap price...
If you add the extra anchors, if you add...
You know, but nine twelve and twenty-two, which one does it take them out of? They're both same, twelve eighty, I got respect on both at twelve gauge.
And you got one with wind warranty.
But, uh, if you, like I said, you add there's ten acres, ten acres, you're at the same price either way. But the, uh, American Steel Carport, I think, is the one that he did offer the ninety mile hour wind warranty with it, which, that to me, I'd say it's a good thing, because you're looking at a big parachute sitting out there on the ground, you know, three sides, we do get some wind right here.
That is three-sided, right?
Yes, that's three sides enclosed.
Where were we at on our other?
Eighty-seven, eighty-four, eighty-two, something like that, something like that.
About a little more than five, you know?
Now, both of these, in their specs, we would probably have to get another load of gravel out here, they do want it to be kind of level.
A little gravel down there, too.
So we need to probably get some more gravel, that'd be something we'd just do to the police jury or do some other sort of stuff. And I'm not sure of this...
The wind warranty takes, pretty much takes like days, I don't know.
So we go with American Steel Carports at ten two twenty-five. So we go with American Steel Carports at ten two twenty-five. Because that wind warranty definitely, I mean, they give you new one if something happens. And that's why he's giving the, um, twenty-two, yeah, this has twenty-two anchors where this other one only has twelve anchors, so, you know, the difference in anchors would bring the prices even closer together.
And we got, we got Harry to call the National Weather Service and not, not to broadcast any winds over ninety mile an hour. So with our warranty, we do.
No wind, it would.
All right, can we make a motion for back to be by there?
American Steel Carports with the wind warranty, twenty-two anchors, I'm submooded.
Sure.
Motion made, second, all of the members say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same thing.
Yeah, the ship in this truck.
Yeah. All right, uh, we're discussing volunteer pay for warehouse.
All right, warehouse, in the past, Dotson has sent manpower up there when they've had fire alarm or fire feature codes, and they pay, and they've been going through the Dotson Fire Department because their truck was their truck before the department, and they've been able to handle it to the C N. The other day, they needed an extra truck and manpower, and we sent a truck and a man. And we, I'm not sure how it works, and I've called several people, but I know that, um, there are set cases for fire departments setting fees for recovering costs versus doing standby. Cost recovery for fire department responses, um, water removal, fire department responses for non-residential fires, um. It's not something that's unheard of. I've talked with, um, Jerry Loomis, he's under the impression that I know, like, when the fire departments went and sat down at the different hazmat incidents, they were able to bill. You're familiar with some of this. It's just, we need to have some kind of structure or fee schedule set.
Used to have one.
Okay.
I don't know where it happened, but I mean, I must have used that one, but I don't have, don't, uh, that, 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 uh, truck wrecks had all that bad plant fuel and all that stuff on them.
Basically what Don Garrett, he was wanting y'all to say that, that we can, we have the check sitting in there from warehouse. We have the fireman that's set up there, um, that needs to be paid. At that time, we weren't sure exactly, we, we, when he went up there, he was under the impression it was twenty dollars an hour. From what Don Garrett tells me, what he would rather see us do is when we send somebody up there, that we put them on the clock down here, still bill warehouse twenty dollars an hour per man, because our cost per man, we have to pay insurance, we have to pay tax. It cost us more than just ten dollars an hour, we pay the man there, we have F I C taxes, uh, social security taxes. So it's to supplement so that we can cover that man's cost. So what we're looking at in the future is being able to, if we do have, if they call, and this is their insurance company requiring us, asking us to go up there, it's not a true emergency. And that's why we can bill, it's not a true emergency, it's something they want, their insurance company wants to pay for, they want us to be there. So, and we just need y'all's approval to, um, cash that check and, uh, pay that man based on what he was agreed on at that time, and in the future, we would just do it as a, um, pay them off the clock, and then put that money right in the coffers, and then bill for the fire truck at whatever rate y'all thinks is efficient.
And the legality of being able to bill for a higher amount and pay a man lower amount has already been checked into?
Not totally.
What's on his head, it's Lee or C P A, remember what she said? You know about that?
No.
Can I tell him?
Yes, please.
She said that we need the board their approval to contact the attorney general, get an attorney general, um, reading on this whole process.
All right, that'd work too, but I'm pretty sure it's gonna be legal.
If it's legal, then, then the, then the setting of the fees, but, I don't know, I just.
You have to be able to, um, to cut your losses. If you don't talk ten dollars an hour, you pay him ten dollars an hour, you wind up, you got social security, family and all that, you got a price.
The process is, this may not be legal at the beginning with. That's, that's, that's the crux of the whole thing, can we even do it?
Oh, okay, okay.
That's the purpose of the attorney general. If we, if we, if we can't do it, we can't consider it. If it's legal to do, we'd settle that right. But if, if, if we're gonna wind up in trouble, that's not good.
Harry, do you have set rates for this type, right?
Yes, there are things that you can go to FEMA, you know, if you have to declare a merchant, they'll tell you how much a, a class A list, all that, all that, all that. You can get what the FEMA going rates are, and it'd be fairly easy to do.
I could tell you that I have worked three different hazardous material incidences where the company was required to pay, and during those incidences, they were required to pay us the full amount of what was paid.
Okay.
Per hour, each fireman.
Okay.
It had something to do with a nonprofit situation.
What's that mean?
So, I think that the, the, the move that we need to make as boards would be to pursue the attorney general's, those penny on that, whether, and what I think Chief is talking about is if, if the company is going to pay X amount of dollars per man and X amount of dollars per truck and equipment, then can we set a rate for those men that is pre-arranged with those men, that they can go and work that scene and be paid that amount? Anything over that comes back to the fire department. That's what you're asking.
Yes, sir.
Well, if it was being, then being an emergency, a hazmat, which is a no-brainer versus, uh, they call at this point.
Because their insurance company says, we want a fire truck there, it's not a fire, it's not an emergency, our, our fire suppression system's down, we will pay if you'll come see.
We just need to make that standby rate for the truck and firefighter a matter of public record in here, that's all we need today.
Yeah, once the attorney general.
Well, it doesn't matter of public record. Really, are you have to set a rate for the fire truck, and I would think if we just set a rate for the firefighter.
For personnel.
Yep, for personnel.
Because they may require so many personnel depending on the scene or the.
Okay, all right, it'll be a ten.
But the main issue is, will it, will it's legal to do or not? Resolve that issue first, then everything else is just secondary to that.
All right, I just need to contact attorney general, I'll say.
If you'll authorize, she said if you'll authorize Troy or Amelia, whichever one, to get the number from her, and we'll contact whichever one, whichever one you need more meter, I will, y'all, however y'all want to handle it.
You got it, brother.
And once that information is gained, we'll bring it back.
Bring it back. If they say it's legal, pass it on back and let's go. If they say it's not illegal, or, I don't know what you, what the five hundred dollars say.
All right, that'll work. I don't think we need a motion on that either.
No, nothing.
Speed it up and bake.
All right, and have a, the structure of the volunteer pay for the fire.
All right, guys, I was the one that kinda have, had been thinking about this. I'm not asking that we take any action on this tonight or anything, I just want to propose, or not really propose anything, I just want us to kinda talk about it, everybody think about it, and then maybe later, if y'all wanna do something about it, we can. I know that there's been some times in the past where sometimes the volunteer turnout on certain types of fires has been thin. Um, and I'm not sure exactly why, maybe it's just various circumstances, I don't know. But, um, I was looking at what we're currently paying for the various fire types, um, for volunteers, and I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, the only thing we're currently paying for is ten dollars, uh, for a structure fire. We're not paying for anything for grass fires, woods fires, or vehicle fires. And, um, maybe some of those fire types, maybe we don't need a lot of volunteers, but if you have a big woods fire, you know, like we've had several up here lately, I'm just thinking that, uh, maybe as a way to possibly or potentially boost our volunteer turnout, uh, that maybe we consider some amount, uh, for one, or maybe all of those fire types. Um, I know, I've been told it's been discussed previously, uh, by previous boards. You know, I don't know how y'all feel about it, but I just want to put it out there and, you know, think about it. Uh, maybe y'all have some thoughts on it.
I think y'all be paid the same amount, if you respond, if you leave your job, your house to respond to a fire, you know, to me, it ought to be the same thing as a structure fire.
You're putting your life in danger, you can't tell if you respond, whether it's a fire or a woods fire or whatever.
Depending, your money to drive, you'll be able to try to help somebody.
That's right.
It's the same thing with a structure fire. Hopefully that all along.
I asked Ms. Margaret to run some numbers, and you'll see in your, your, uh, folder there that she did. Uh, in twenty fourteen, we had a total of a hundred and fifty-one, uh, recorded, uh, incidents. Thirty-one of them were structure fires, seventy-eight, uh, let's see, total volunteers responding were seventy-eight. Average paid per person, that's just average, sixty, highest paid three forty, lowest paid ten bucks. Um, total money's paid out last year, forty-seven hundred. Um, and then I asked her to run some numbers, uh, as if we were paying just, uh, based on three bucks. I just pulled that out of the air, okay? Just to see what, about what it would cost us if we'd been paying for the other, uh, fire types last year. Uh, three bucks per person, uh, I mean, per fire, per volunteer, uh, it would've cost us less than three thousand dollars. And I realize that that's not a lot of money for a volunteer, but it's more of a gesture, a goodwill gesture, just saying here, this will pay for your gas, at least, you know, a little bit of it anyway, we appreciate your coming out.
At ten dollars, it wouldn't have been six thousand dollars.
Exactly, so, I mean, we're not, we're not talking about a fortune here, but I just, I would like for us to, uh, to consider that, and, uh, I, I would like to see us pay some amount on the other fire types. And the amount is up for discussion.
To me, it's worth just as much for a house fire as it is a car fire or a grass fire. I spent, I, I, two years ago, these guys were running at least three nights a week, four nights a week, St. Maurice, and spending half night down here.
Mm-hmm, that's right.
They getting up going and working our other jobs next month, yeah.
And didn't get nothing started.
Well, I, it, it, it sounds like to me that most everybody here feels the same way I do about it, and if that be the case, uh, how do y'all feel about it if they're now? I was thinking thirty-five bucks, but we could go ten.
Personally, I'm, I'm saying, I'm not the person. You know, they cost you just as much to go with a grass fire, if it does go to a furniture fire.
That be the case, then I would.
Same thing straight across the board, y'all.
I would, I would move that we restructure our volunteer pay to include all fire types at the same amount as a structure fire. I so moved.
So I think, must make a set, all of the members say aye.
Aye.
And if both same time, we'll do it. All right, I do, Chief.
Um, I would like us to be able to get our own I D machine. Somewhere in my mess here, there is a catalog from a company called DeVeau. They have I D machines in the price range.
That's right there.
Uh, I've been looking for it all day, and there it is.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir, because it says board out on I Ds. Uh, you know, we, we had a bid one time for a, from a lady out of Shreveport, and I mean, she was like seven thousand dollars. I mean, I can find I D machines in this catalog, I can even find two-sided machines, um, that'll probably do what we need for less than three thousand dollars. Um, I'd just like to, permission to kinda come up with the best thing and just buy. I mean, it's under a bid price, um, I just need the best I D machine we can get. I have my own cameras, we don't need their cameras, uh, we just need a, the software and the card printer. How we handle I Ds now? We don't have any.
We got plenty of I Ds, but we just ain't got nothing to make.
It was broken, and a big time, went to the sheriff's office, so far that's just not working. The I D machine that the sheriff's office got, I bought it with all that security money, four or five years ago, we paid three thousand dollars for it. And I'm sure we'd probably get one somewhere too, for a reasonable, you know, with a little bit of raise, maybe. I got there from Mason Bible, I hope he writes, you had that one there, I got there from Mason Bible.
Back last summer, that we had agreed to buy an I D machine. I never did come up with a price.
I had, Mr. Billy, I had brought it up, and whenever I brought it up, you wanted me to get prices, and that crazy lady up there, three, four.
It's eight thousand.
Astronomical figure.
And this is a company here that sends us something every month, and I mean, the prices are reasonable.
As fast as they go out of date, you probably gonna need a cheaper one anyway.
And I just want permission to spend under, like, under three thousand dollars to get an I D machine. Dual-sided, give, two-sided. In color, and pictures on them. And I think I can get that. I get it. Uh, uh, we just, it's software and a printer, and then supplies. We got five hundred, um, cards already.
Well, yeah, we're gonna stay right back.
And this is like forty-nine ninety-nine, one was a higher, but I don't even know if it need to be that high. I gotta make sure he wants it to be double-sided. Dual-sided here is a twenty-five ninety-nine, one-box system. Advantage of a secure dual-sided upgrade ribbon. Now, that may be a little bit more.
Boy, it's yours.
Run out too.
Mine don't have, it's here. I come this twenty-second this year. The only reason it was in, it's been a four-year, two-year.
I'd have to back something totally again if I had, well, I don't know, around two thousand thirteen.
I would say, boy. I'd say go ahead and, uh, get one at a reasonable price, because everyone needs to be done.
All right. Now, we want to, do we want to make a motion to spend up to a certain amount, but we need to put a certain.
And that's for the machine, it's the, the software, now the supplies may be an extra. That's, that's, this is dual. Sir? I think I can get us something for that.
Didn't we have a camera or?
Uh, we, we got cameras, that's why I came, we got, um. Dual-sided, the good one is twenty-nine ninety-nine, and then you get supplies to make sure you're. But that's just the, the, um, the one-box secure system here. Dual-sided is thirty-seven ninety-nine, I think we didn't need to go any higher than that. But I'll just read and make sure, hopefully these is our best options, thirty-nine ninety-nine, thirty-seven.
You made a motion?
Spend thirty-five hundred.
Thirty-five hundred.
Motion made, second, all of the members say aye.
Aye.
And if both same time. All right, A E D.
Um, part of our training for our, um, CPR and all, they want an A E D trainer as part of it. Um, there's a company out of, um, just outside of Baton Rouge that has, they're called Cardiac Sciences, they're on state contract for the actual real A E D. I don't know that y'all wanna get any of those just yet, but as part of our class for, um, CPR and all, we need a trainer. The trainer is like three hundred ninety-nine dollars. The trainer is like three hundred and ninety-nine dollars, um, for AED trainer.
One last question, have you talked to the... What was right there?
Sir?
It was part of the one that brought the AED, got a red...
Rappi Foundation.
Rappi Foundation.
Tom LaCalle?
He's out of that business now. Um, Kevin Chandler's the person that's gonna be a trainer for the fire district. He scheduled for two classes in March to train, and part of it is to have the AED. Without us going full board to the AED business, you know, I think several stations had AEDs, but they all expired, all the batteries are dead. But it's part of, part of the training, it just requires to set up the AED trainer. The company's not in there.
Let somebody love the rest, get somebody out there.
Kevin Chandler's gonna do the training.
Now, he's doing the training, he's not selling the AEDs. This is, uh, just say, just...
Purchase a trainer for the...
That's a machine, it's not a machine, it's a machine that simulates.
Oh, okay.
It simulates the AED.
In other words, the AED itself is twelve ninety-five on state contract, and the trainer is like three ninety-nine.
Really, the one I remember of it, really, indeed, in fact, it was pretty much set in place.
That's what it is now, yeah, yeah, it, it taught you everything.
And if these AEDs are only twelve ninety-five, I'd...
So we need one AED and one trainer, is what you're saying, right?
I would like to get one of the...
One AED and one trainer.
Well, I said, but what's the training? The AED tells you what to do.
Kevin's gonna do the classes.
The trainer won't shock you, and it will certify the class.
You get certification, you have to have the, the trainer along with the AED, you have to have that as part of the class to get certified to do it. It's just, it's just the way it's set up.
I'd like to get one, at least one AED for here, either at this station or to keep in my truck. Maybe even more.
I know what I've run into, when we had one, was, the battery, the first one I replaced was over two hundred dollars. I was the first everywhere around here that I could find somebody, and I was, did not find it to know.
I did, I did, I finally went down, just...
And that second one, I just decided, well, we don't need it anymore.
The batteries on these have a four-year warranty. If they go out, if they go out three hundred, you know, three years and two hundred days, you're gonna need... The, the machine is, it has a little green light, it self analyzes us every day. As long as it's green, the, the system ring, it even cross checks the pads. Um, this was the company that I saw, um, down in Baton Rouge at the show. And that's the lowest price I've seen on AED, it's fake concrete, twelve ninety-five. And it's a good AED. I had, um, I had all the ambulance guys here when he came and gave the demonstration about this. They were very impressed, uh, uh, they think it's a nice unit. The Power Hard AED G3 Plus, the flagship of automated external disperfl才是. It even has a way, if the pads are plugged in, it checks them, whether they dry out or not, so...
Well, it's important too, and, um, you know, they, they improve and save a lot of lives.
What if one of us goes down out there?
That's the purpose, it's for firefighters, not to do all this.
It's a small, it's a small price to pay, because if you do the research, number one cause of, of deaths in the fire service is heart-related distress, cardiac failure. And, uh, I, I know that it's a small price to pay to get some surety to the firemen that are out there. And of course, having the trainer unit is the ideal sort of situation to be able to properly cha, train every individual on how, out, to actually use that device.
How much is the train?
Three ninety-nine.
Three ninety-nine. You know, when you do CPR classes, they bring in little dummies for you to, to test on, and there's a reason they bring those, so you can actually get hands-on experience with it, so, um...
I have bought, I have a set of dummies here already. We're ready for this class. This is all we'd like, to get this class going.
I, I, I would go out and say, make a motion to purchase a trainer.
And one unit or two?
Are you requesting the trainer in one unit?
I would like, I would like at least one and not the...
Do we have any units at the department at all? Does that work now? So we're, we're looking at what's the cost?
Twelve ninety-five.
Plus the trainer. Uh, we just spent three thousand five hundred dollars on a laborer that cannot save a life. So I'm just looking at the priority of what this can do for the fire department. I would make a motion to buy the trainer in one unit.
I say. Motion taken, second. All in favor say aye. Aye, aye, any opposed, same time. All right, personnel.
All right. This, um, Christopher Winters would be number one. Do you, and I don't know how this, whether y'all need to go into executive session for this or not.
You want to go into executive session, which means that nobody in here, because...